Welcome to the April 18th, 2024 Fairfax Planning Commission Meeting. Can I get a roll call?
Swift?
Here, sorry.
Bayla?
Present.
Kelly?
Here.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Chair Jansen?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have anything to amend to the agenda? Commissioner Swift?
I'd like to switch Planning Director's Report and Commissioner comments and requests. We used to have it that way, and I think it's a better flow when we hear the Planning Director's Report first, and then we follow that with any of our requests and comments.
It's a good suggestion.
So with that, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, I'll call roll Swift.
Yes.
Bayla?
Yep.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Yes.
Thank you. We will continue. I will read the meeting protocol. The Chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizens' input at the Commission meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings, and in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should: One, limit their presentations to three minutes. Two, provide their comments by email. Three, state their view and concerns succinctly. And four, submit any new documents to the planning staff directly or via email at the planning@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. Before we go to the public comments, I would like to congratulate the Town of Fairfax and congratulate the staff of the Town of Fairfax, because the housing element has been certified as we have received, so I think that's a good milestone. Thank you. Specifically, there the Planning Director who's nodding and smiling. We'll go to public comments on non-agenda items. I think first, did we receive anything by email of somebody who wants to present something? Is that a correct question here? We did not. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on items not on agenda? Please go ahead.
Good evening. Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Suzy Bergen. I live at 30 Spruce Road behind the Fairfax Lumber Yard. As you may recall, I'll give you just a little bit of a history so we all remember. For the past five years and more, many of us have been complaining and lodging nuisance complaints to the Town of Fairfax regarding the dust, the fugitive dust, the noise, and the blight. We petitioned the Town Council to be on the agenda two years ago. We got on the agenda. We had a meeting with Fairfax Lumber President. A planning committee was, a subcommittee was formed. That's another story. That didn't really ever take place, but through public forums with you all, twice, we went in front of you. We met with the Tree Committee, and we've, we've been back to the Town Council a number of times. The end result being that last September, you guys approved a fence, 300-foot fence, mostly metal, corrugated metal, at an eight-foot variance. And apparently, the Fairfax Lumber had hired a landscape architect to draw up the plans. As you recall, the first set of plans weren't very acceptable. It was great that they were approved, and we were hopeful that with the landscape architect and the resources that they have as a lumberyard, that they would get to work on that fence. It has been seven months, and nothing has happened. We've tried to communicate directly with them. We've tried to go work through their landscape architect. We've also tried to work through the town. I'm here to give you an update. Just really disappointed that, in good faith and goodwill with their neighbors, that they're not even moving forward on anything. I did reach out to Linda, and she got back to me and said that the approval was good for a year. We're super curious what happens after a year.
No, what I said, that it's good for a year, and then they can request a year extension. So it can be, the approval, the Planning Commission approval can be good up to two years.
So, and then my follow-up question was, do they have to come back for the extension? Or does that get automatically approved?
The extension, they just have to submit a request in writing to the Planning Director.
Okay.
So it doesn't cost them any money, and it's no application form or anything.
Okay. Thank you. And with that said, though, we just don't have a lot of faith that they're going to do the right thing here and actually move forward with their fence plans. And so we're here to express our disappointment and hope that if there's anything you all can do to help us move this along, we would love to hear back from you, even through via Linda if we need to. And we're open to comments and suggestions, and we're open to working together. We're just not getting very far with them. Anything else? Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Your concern is duly noted. Are there any other members in the public that'd like to speak? Seeing none, we're closing the open mic, if I may call it that. There's nothing on the consent calendar, so I believe we can go into the public hearing items. Number 131 Maple Avenue. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, and I wanted to mention a couple of things before I present the staff report. So the notice that went out for this meeting indicated that, that there is an enclosed area under the ADU that needed to be legalized. But when staff looked at that, after the notice went out, we realized that that area is actually kind of, it meets the ADU requirements, and it's part of the ADU, so it does not require discretionary approval from the Planning Commission. And then the other thing that I would like to mention is that we accidentally published the draft version of the staff report and the resolution for the 31 Maple project in the packet. So I forwarded the, the final version to the Planning Commission yesterday afternoon, and the changes are reflected in track changes format. So that the main change was essentially that the final version has a mitigation measure that requires the property owner to show that they can modify or remove maybe some of the impervious surfaces and get the lot coverage to 35%. So that was the main change. And I have a couple of suggested changes then to the resolution that was in the packet, but I will make those after I give the staff report. Okay. So the project proposes to add, excuse me, an approximately 200-square-foot deck onto the side of a second-story ADU. The deck would be constructed of wood with a wooden hogwire fence to match the railing on the stairway to the ADU. And the deck would be about nine feet above the driveway on the property. The property is in the RD 5.5-7 residential zone. It's developed with the approximately 1,700-square-foot house. It has an attached garage and an ADU above the garage. The property owners installed a front access stairway and some, and a little walkway in their northern side yard that caused the property to exceed the allowable 35% lot coverage limitation. However, those, those types of improvements don't require any kind of building or planning permit, so when they did it, they had no idea that they were going to exceed the lot coverage. So the existing property meets all the setbacks. It meets the FAR, the building height requirements. The proposed deck addition would cause it to not meet the rear yard setback, the combined front rear yard setback, the northern side yard setback, and the combined side yard setback. So the project requires approval of variances to, for the deck to encroach in those setbacks. And it also requires approval of a conditional use permit, because it's a construction of a structure on a non-conforming property. So a lot coverage variance is not required, because there is going to be, I'm going to suggest basically a condition of approval get added to the resolution that, that requires the property owner to show how they can reduce the lot coverage to 35% when they submit for building permits. So there are, we made some suggested findings for the conditional use permit. The property will continue to maintain similar setbacks, FAR and building height, as other properties in the neighborhood and in the Ridgeway Park subdivision, and many of which also have second-story decks which project into required setbacks. So granting the conditional use permit would not be a grant of special privilege. The proposed deck would project past the side of the ADU approximately nine feet above the driveway, which would not exceed the allowable height. It would maintain a seven-foot setback from Live Oak Avenue, which would provide more than adequate visibility for pedestrians or people using, driving along Live Oak Avenue, the Live Oak Avenue right-of-way. The closest it's going to be from a neighboring property is about 28 feet, and that's 28 feet in front of the house at 8 Live Oak Avenue. And we received a letter of support from that person who lives in that property today, and that was forwarded on to you, and it's in the supplemental materials in the lobby. So therefore, the, the deck addition would not create a public nuisance. The project would not change the single-family use of the site, and approval of the requested variances ensures it would be consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. The creation of some additional private outdoor living space for the residents of the ADU and the condition of approval requiring the lot coverage to be reduced to 35% would result in equal or better development of the property, and approval of the conditional use permit would be in the public interest. So the suggested variance findings are the corner lot configuration with two street frontages, the irregular property shape, relatively small size, narrow width, and approximately 16% slope, or the special circumstances that make it difficult for the proposed deck to comply with the setback requirements and warrant granting the setback variances. The variance would not constitute a grant of special privilege, because there are other properties in the vicinity and under general zone class, and under identical zone classification that have second-story decks within required setbacks. And the strict application of the setback, of the setback regulations would result in an undue hardship for the property owners, since it would prohibit them from creating this additional private outdoor living space for the occupants of the ADU on a, on a quarter lot that has two street frontages, two dwelling units, and little usable private outdoor living space. And just like before with the conditional use permit finding, because the deck would only, the closest it would get to a neighbor would be 28 feet, and it would be seven feet from the Live Oak right-of-way, granting the variance is not anticipated to be detrimental to neighboring properties or the public welfare. So that concludes the staff report. And then I, the two changes I have to the resolution are, the first one is on page two, paragraph four. And it's the second sentence, starting with condition of approval 13 below, and there's a comma. So I recommend striking the comma and the remainder of the sentence after that and replacing it with a new sentence. So it would read, "Condition of approval 13 below requires the building permit plans to show the areas where impermeable surfaces would be removed or modified to bring the site into compliance with the 35% lot coverage limitation." So that would be the first change. And then the second change would be on page four, paragraph 13, or "Condition of approval 13", and I recommend striking the entire condition and replacing it with a new one that says, "The building permit plans for the deck shall show the areas where impermeable surfaces would be removed or modified to bring the site into compliance with a 35% lot coverage limitation." So with those changes, we recommend that you approve the project, adopt, approve the, oh, excuse me, approve the resolution that, approving the project.
Thank you. Do we have questions for staff? Commissioner Swift?
So on the reso, what was the first change? Because I only have, because I only have one that's redlined.
I, I know, and I, and I realized that today, so I, I, I'm sorry about that. I, I meant, I was going to bring that up, and I, and it slipped my mind. Yeah, so there, there was another change that needed to be in, in the document that I sent you yesterday, and I, and it didn't get in there. So it's on page four. And it's a reference to "Condition of approval 13", which changed. So that's why that, that paragraph needs to change.
That one actually is in there.
Yeah. And then there. Right, and I, I did not, the, what I sent you yesterday didn't have that change in it yet. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So.
Sorry.
So it's, um, so it's page two, paragraph four, and it's the second sentence, starting with "Condition of approval 13".
Okay.
And so I recommend where, so it starts off, "Condition of approval 13 below, comma." So what I recommend is where the comma is, striking that and the rest of the sentence after that.
About the ground?
Yeah, and replacing it with a, the language that mirrors the condition 13, that changes to that. So basically say, the new, the, the new sentence would read, "Condition of approval 13 below requires the building permit plans to show the areas where impermeable surfaces would be removed or modified to bring the site into compliance with a 35% lot coverage limitation." So that would be the change.
Then a couple other questions. If you can explain the process for ADUs, they get over-the-counter permits, ministerial, plans come in, correct? So during that ADU build process, are there checks during that process to confirm that what is being built conforms to the plans? Because it sounds from this, and I'm just trying to understand the process, that the contractor went ahead and made changes without going back to staff?
Correct.
So that was one. And then during that process, does the building inspector go out periodically during the build, like he does for other things in check? Or is it just at the end of the process? He does a final inspection?
There are, there are typical places where an inspector goes out, like a framing, they do a framing inspection. We have a one-person building department, so sometimes if he gets really busy, he'll let people send photographs to him of things. And so I'm not, we're not sure how this happened, but he is supposed to go out for a final inspection, a framing inspection, usually a sheet rock inspection, you know, and electrical. I mean, there, so there's steps that he, that he typically tries to get out to the site. We're not sure how this little area got built.
That's fine. And then my last question is, we had a staff report in February. This was going to come to us in February, and I appreciate, even though, you know, we don't, the ADU is a separate thing, it's not before us, what I appreciate on the table, the table one that was in the staff report, especially when we have projects that may have an ADU or as a part of the building, right? But we're not seeing that, but we're seeing some other part that's coming before us. I appreciate having the table the way it was in the February report, where it breaks out like for combined front rear setback, it has 30 feet, and it has a footnote what that applies to. It has 26 feet, and there's a footnote there. That's, from my perspective, helpful when I look at plans, trying to understand all that. So and my question then is, on the current staff report, there's a combined front rear setback of existing of 36 feet. So on the February one, it was 30 feet and 26 feet. The current one, it's 36 feet. Can you remind me what that 36 feet existing reflects?
So for the, um, if you look at the plans, in front, they have a 22-foot setback in front, and then the back setback is about 14 feet. But we're rounding up now. So it's this, the front, so it's about 14 feet to the, because we're not counting that wall that's underneath the ADU.
The rear setback is where the difference is. It's 14 feet on April, and in February, it's eight and four.
Yeah, so in February, we were looking at the wall that was under the ADU as, as the setback, but it's really kind of incidental to the ADU and the space, the enclosed area it creates, is just sort of an incidental walkway that's not living space or improved. So.
Okay.
We're counting that. Okay.
I'd like to make sure I'm clear on that. Okay, so in, in your report, you had also said that the closest residence is 28 feet away, but it looks like on the plans, it's 18? I want to make sure I'm clear.
So I just meant like this. Sorry. I meant from the deck, so not the entire, so I was just thinking about how the deck could, since it's extra space, how it could affect the neighbors, and I was just taking the distance of the deck from the, from the house, not the whole ADU.
Okay, so the stair is part of the ADU, and it's four feet from the setback.
Yes.
Which seems contrary to anything we have in town. Is that true?
Potentially, but it's, it's allowed by the ADU ordinance.
We don't need setbacks.
It, it can be four feet side and rear setback.
Okay, that's, that's what I would need it to be clear on. Okay.
Yes.
So I had a question related to that four-foot setback point. So the ADU ordinance says that the setback can be as small as four feet but if they're, the combined setbacks don't get modified to reflect the ADU?
No, we, we, we can't look at any other kind of development standard, other than what is in the ADU ordinance for ADUs. So since that stairway is part of the ADU, we don't look at the combined.
Got it. Okay. One last one on the four-foot thing. And that's, doesn't matter whether it's side or rear, it's just any property line for four?
It's side and rear for, and then we have a 10-foot front. So, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Oh, yes. Oh, I, that was my question. She's very small there. Commissioner.
Carol, what, what is online in terms of the updated material that you provide to the Planning Commission on the town website? Has that all been updated with the redline?
No, it has not.
Okay, so the public is really hearing all about this for the first time through the staff report, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I know we talked a lot about it, but I do want to go back to that table. Because the way it is presented, we have what's required, we have what existing and what's proposed. But in my mind, what is proposed is about the deck, because that's what we're reviewing. So if you go to the list, the existing 36 feet, incorrect. That is 26 existing, because the ADU is already built. That's four and 22. So the comparison, if I, if you look at this and you read existing, and then now if we approve it, it would change, that's incorrect. It's already built. It's part of the ADU. It's not part of what the Commission is looking at. So the existing combined front and rear currently, as constructed and permitted, is 26. It's not changing. That's not what the table says. And that might be the same for the side setbacks. Yeah, which I, so I circled both. So the maybe what I would recommend is, I, I understand you want to clarify also that there's two things going. There's the unit, and there's this, you might need four lines where it is required, original and then currently existing, which includes the ADU, and then now what is proposed, because that's the only part we're ruling on. So if we were, if we were to not accept this, it would still be 26 feet, because that's part of the ADU, so right, this makes it convoluted. So that's why, maybe where all those questions come from. Then, as Commissioner Kelly mentioned, for the combined side setbacks, it says it's currently 20. But then I am not sure that is actually true either, because it would be, in reality, because the house is not changing, so that's eight feet on the back. And then it is currently seven on the front with proposed, and it used to be 12. So the difference is only five feet. So it's, oh, that is the five feet that it jumps. So the side setback is correct. It's the rear only that's off. Okay. I think we beat this to death now. All right. Thank you. I think we, if the applicant is here, I think we would like to hear from him. Please come forward. Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Bridgette Fies. You've spoken with her many times. I'm her husband, Tony Franco.
Speak closer to the mic.
My name's Tony Franco. I'm Bridgette Fies's husband. But she's the boss, so I'm just here. She's in a big meeting, and she could not get away. So unfortunately, I'm probably not well-versed in any of the nomenclature that you guys are accustomed to, so.
I do believe Bridgette is online, side and review.
Yeah, she is. Yeah, I was texting her. So I don't know if, how the Zoom thing works, if she can communicate, because she can speak a lot more intelligently about the project than I can, so.
And then we'll move to Bridgette. Hi, Bridgette, you should be able to speak now. Unmute yourself.
Hey there. Hi, guys. This is all.
This is all rather foreign to me as well. So I'm curious what you guys would like me to say. I'd love for you guys to approve it. I'm not sure what more information I can provide, but I'm happy to.
Do we have questions for the applicant?
I do. I do have pictures. Pictures are always easy for me if anybody wants to see any. Also, a couple of our neighbors, one directly across from the deck and next door neighbor, the people that are basically impacted the most. They wrote a couple of letters basically in support of everything. So.
And we have those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Newton, any questions? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public?
I believe Bridget wasn't finished. I'm sorry.
Please go ahead, Bridget. Continue.
Oh, I just, I wanted to know what, if it's approved and what, what if you guys have any questions or what the next steps might be.
No, it's not yet approved. We were, you were presenting to us. We do not have questions for you. So at this point, I think we have all the information we need. We're going to take a look at if we have comments from the public is the next step. So thank you, Bridget.
Thanks.
And do we have anybody in the public or anybody online that would like to speak?
I see no other hands online.
I do not see anybody in the public, so we'll bring it back to the commission. Who would like to start? Any opinions? Please go ahead.
I'm generally in favor of the project. I do want to just point out that even on their documents, the setbacks are don't seem to be accurate, none their drawings, just in the data. So we should just make sure that that's corrected in the final set. That would be great.
Yeah, I'm also generally supportive of the project. Just want to note, you know, at least once a meeting when it happens, always appreciate the applicants going out to their neighbors and and getting their feedback and passing that along to us before the meetings. Thanks.
And I'm in approval of this project and the only change that I, you know, if we're at the point of the resolution, the only change I would like to see is in the red line part of thirteen. Because one of the things that was initially concerning for me was the lot coverage and the lot coverage exceeding what's allowed there. And, you know, the concern of precedence and all of that. So I would want to change that wording to where it says where impermeable surfaces would be removed. I would like to see that change to will be removed. So it's clear that we need to get down to that thirty five percent.
Okay, or shall, shall be removed, would shall. Okay.
So that was my only comment on that.
Just a question. First half in making the motion, do we need to read the red line language?
No, you can just read the title of the resolution and then 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 cite the like the 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 change as discussed to condition thirteen and whatever the other ones. Paragraph four, yeah, you can just cite that because we we have it down.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure, I would move to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash five, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number twenty four dash O two for a conditional use permit. A rear yard setback variance, a combined front and rear yard setback variance, a minimum side yard setback variance and a combined side yard setback variance for the construction of an approximately two hundred square foot second story deck onto an accessory dwelling unit located above an attached garage at thirty one Maple Avenue with the changes to paragraph four on page two of the resolution and paragraph thirteen on page four of the resolution as discussed during the meeting and as reflects Commissioner Swift's amendment.
I'd second that. Now I'll call the roll. Swift?
Yes.
Bayla?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
One more.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Newton, see, they are, they keep telling me to move over there so I can see the screen. Maybe I do need to do that. Commissioner Newton, sorry. Did you say aye? Okay.
Motion passes. There is a ten day appeals period, which can be started with a verified application to the town clerk in the manner prescribed by the town council. Thank you. We'll move on to item number two. That is eighty eight Hillside. Can we get a staff report on eighty eight Hillside?
Okay, so this project encompasses construction of a one hundred and twenty square foot accessory structure with electrical service that will be used for storage and as a music room in the front yard of a property developed with a single family residence. The accessory structure siding will be horizontal cement cladding painted gray. The trim will be white. Sound mitigation measures will be provided in the structure and will include acoustical bat wall insulation and mass loaded vinyl behind the drywall. There will be one exterior light on the south side of the structure. The project requires a conditional use permit for two reasons. Based on the site's twenty seven percent slope, the the seven thousand seven hundred and ten square foot site doesn't meet the minimum size requirements based on that slope. If for that slope, a site would have to be nineteen thousand square feet in size and at least a hundred and ten feet wide to comply with the current code. So the site's legal nonconforming and the town code requires that any new construction on a legal nonconforming site requires the approval of a conditional use permit from the planning commission. So due to the slope and the location of the parking, substantial distance away from the access stairway to the property, we're able to make the following findings to support the conditional use permit. Construction of the accessory storage music room will not constitute a grant of special privilege. It's common for older homes built in the early nineteen hundreds in Fairfax to have very little storage space. Since many of Fairfax's older homes were built between nineteen ten and nineteen forty, there are a lot of similar sites with older homes that rely on accessory buildings to provide storage or additional living space for the residents. And there are accessory structures that have been approved by the planning commission as storage, home offices, playrooms, yoga studios, et cetera. When expanding an existing house would either be very expensive, would negatively impact the historic architecture of the home or would require too much excavation or other site disturbance. The accessory structure maintains most of the, it maintains all of the minimum required setbacks and the combined side yard setbacks, and it doesn't encroach any further into the required combined front rear setback than the front access stairway fence and parking retaining wall. Therefore, the impact of the structure on adjoining properties is minimal. The proposed accessory structure complies with the other zoning regulations, including accessory structure height limit of fifteen feet, floor area ratio of point four oh and the lot coverage of point three five. Therefore, the approval of the use permit is not contrary to the objectives, goals and standards pertinent to this case. And accessory structures used for storage are listed as permitted accessory uses in the RS six zone and the commission approval of a conditional use permit for the combination storage music room and the structure size and design results in a use that will fit in with the residential character of the Hillside Drive neighborhood. It's not out of scale with the site and it will enable the owners to keep the site organized and secure while providing a sound limiting musical instrument practice space, which is in the private and public interest. The project requires a combined front rear setback variance. Even though the shed is going to exceed the required ten foot front, minimum front setback because of a large deck at the rear of the house, it doesn't comply with the combined thirty five foot front rear setback. But enforcing the combined thirty five foot front yard setback would make access to the one hundred and twenty square foot storage structure difficult and deprive owners of the owners of the ability to have storage close to the street where it's easily accessible from their parking area. Because it is a bit of a steep slope to, you know, to get their bikes, you know, out of the car and into a safe place up the stairs. That's so requiring it to be further from the front property line would be an unnecessary hardship for the owners. This the shed and the front property line maintain a good distance back from the curb of the Hillside Drive. So there's it's setback quite a distance from the street. The approval of the variance to allow a storage music room accessory structure to encroach seven feet into the combined thirty five foot combined front rear setback will not be a grant of special special privilege because the accessory structure will exceed the the required minimum front setback of ten feet. The only specific conditions that we had from from departments was the building department is requiring that the sound limiting installation and all the windows must be fire rated. And the planning department has the following conditions, the windows and doors used for the prefabricated accessory structure must be noise canceling or limiting. The noise generated by the dual use of the accessory structure as a storage area and a music room must not violate the town noise ordinance. Repeated violation of the noise ordinance may result in scheduling the conditional use permit for a hearing before the planning commission to consider permit modification or revocation. And the exterior light fixture proposed on the south side of the accessory structure shall be dark sky compliant, fully shielded and emit no light above the horizontal plane with no sag or drop lenses, side light panels or uplight panels, as well as complying with color temperature to minimize blue rich lighting. And the lighting plan shall be submitted with the building permit application and be approved by the planning department prior to issuance of that permit. The lighting shall not emit direct offsite illumination and shall be the minimum necessary for safety. And we're recommending that you approve application twenty four zero three by adopting resolution twenty twenty four dash zero six, which set forth the sets forth the findings and the conditions of the project approval. And I wanted to, I tried to send, well, let me explain the whole story of why you didn't get the letters of support. So this project was submitted in twenty twenty one and we're now in twenty twenty four. And they were like at the back of the file. And I just found them literally yesterday and I thought that I scanned them and sent them to you, but there were quite a few letters of support for this storage shed that came in in twenty twenty one. So I'm not there, I'm not going to read them all to you, but I'm going to just give you the names of the people that are supporting it. So we have a letter of support from Linda Mondo and she lives, did she put her address on her? She lives right across the street, I think. Yeah, she's at eighty nine Hillside. And we have support from George Crispo and he lives at ninety eight Hillside and has lived there for forty years. Support from Collette and Jared Goral Goralnik, they live at eighty four Hillside. And support from Lori Berliner and Michael Hayes that live at seventy five Hillside Drive. And Georgia Gibbs that lives at seventy three Hillside. And then I believe we, another one was sent today. So.
Yes, correct. We received that.
Yeah, and we had no letters in opposition to the proposal. So that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just had a question, just wanted to confirm that there are no no trees or there's no tree tree removal permit or no trees are impacted by the, cool.
No.
Any other questions for staff?
I don't have a question for staff, but I'll have a question for the applicant when we get to that.
Okay. I do have questions for staff. Again, this is the table. I seem to be repeating myself here. The front setback is listed as proposed to be twelve feet. I believe that wants to say twenty two feet. Because it's twenty two feet away from the property line.
Property line is the front fence, so I thought it scaled at twelve feet. Let me, uh.
The drawing shows the property line.
So I went and measured it in the field and I think, I think the drawings are a little bit hard to read. Because I think you can verify with the applicant, but I believe it's twenty two feet.
Yeah, twenty two feet, three inches is listed front property line setback. So.
So when you see front property line and you see the arrow. Right? So.
Yes.
I measured it field, right? And it's, it's literally, it's twelve feet from the front property line is the fence. We measured from the center of the road and the right of way is forty feet wide. So I believe where he's showing the front, the wood fence, that's the front property line. And you're going to have to ask the designer what he means by that, because I think he had an arrow going to twenty two, three, and it goes to the front, the fence. Do you see how it kind of goes on both sides of the twenty two feet, three inches?
Maybe we'll come back to you with the questions. We'll listen to the applicant first.
The fence is the front property line and the shed is is proposed twelve feet from the fence, which is the front property.
That would change everything, but we'll ask the the applicant. That's not what the drawing says. Okay. So we'll get back to that in a little bit. On that note, and I think you mentioned that the the reason the combined front and rear setback is less than the required thirty five is basically triggered by the deck. There's a very large deck in the back that meets great when it comes to the end. So for all means and purposes, that's not a structure that's doing that. If you write, so it's a different.
Our definition of structure is pretty all encompassing. Do you want me to read it to you?
Yeah, so I understand. Yeah, yeah. But it's not a building. It is the deck.
It's a deck, yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The house is set well, well away from the rear property line.
Right, right. Any other questions for staff? No, maybe the applicant wants to talk to us. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Lex Razan. I live at eighty eight Hillside. Thanks for having me tonight. You guys have some specific questions or you would you like me just to speak in behalf of my family and myself?
Both.
Okay, well, I've lived in, I've lived in Fairfax for seventeen years, grew up in Mill Valley and find myself in this lovely town around two thousand and seven and had the opportunity to purchase the home and you know, what we know as the economic crash, but we was lucky to find this place. And it suited us and has suited us for many years, although now we have two ten year old twins, twins, and the house itself is twelve hundred square feet approximately. And what we're trying to do is maintain our current living status here in Fairfax because we love the town. And this proposed structure on our property would not only give us enough space to basically live a little bit more comfortably, but you know, continue for us to live and support this town that we absolutely love. And I am part of the community in terms of playing music here in town. And my kids are now at Wade Thomas School. And we are, you know, super happy to be here. We've considered remodeling the home, but as you guys know, that is just, just out of reach at this point. So what my wife and I did was find a, you know, a solution to currently take care of a little bit of our space issues. And that is, like Linda had said, you know, we ride bikes and it's really cumbersome to bring anything up from our car up to the house. And then once we get to the house, there's really not that much property. And then once we get to the house, there's really not that much proper storage. So, you know, coming up with this plan to not only stay in the town, but also to maintain a standard of living that's, you know, basically, you know, we're trying to find something that's economically sustainable for us so we could basically live here and not leave the town of Fairfax and find something else outside of this, this town. So, you know, we currently love the area and our avid cyclists and hikers and fishermen and, and, you know, our kids are just, you know, there's a new set of young children moving into the neighborhood, which our children are now becoming friends with. So what we want to do is just continue the community here and, and but also try to live a little bit more comfortably and not stress out too much. So. That's all I need to say about that, really.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you so much.
We might be questions. I will have one, but that's first, if there's any questions.
I have a question for you. There's an existing shed.
Sure. Yes.
In the corner.
Yes.
That's been there since maybe 2011.
Right.
So, and that might be in the front setback as well.
Right.
So you're building a new, you want to build a new shed, a better shed.
Sure.
Probably bigger than the one that I see.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
So what are your plans for that existing shed? Are you will, are you planning to take that down?
Yes.
The other one.
Yes, absolutely.
Is complete and you've moved everything from what you have in there now.
Right now it's like camping gear and and music equipment and like all sorts of sort of like bicycles and things like that, which barely holds any of that at this point. So.
Right.
Yeah. So if when the structure, if you, if you guys do approve it, the, the structure, the, the new structure will be put up and then that one would be either dismantled or moved or given away to somebody else for sure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That was my main question on that.
Okay.
Thank you. It's important detail. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I have a question for you as we started, the, the drawing seems to indicate that the property line is the dash line that goes around. And it is listed that the setback from that property line is 22 feet and three inches. That is drawing A102. Is that correct?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Peter Brandelius, designer of record on this one. You know, as you know, I inherited this project three years ago when the initial application was submitted. So the site plan is drawn from the AP map, which is on A101, if you guys can see that. And it appears, at least it appears to me that the property does go all the way to the street. And I don't know if there's a way to verify that with adjacent properties. I am happy to amend if we're talking about a matter of 10 feet. And I don't know if the shift from front to rear would make a difference in terms of setback compliance or not.
So the, the property you are looking at, at the APN on what is that, that sheet, A101?
Yeah.
Is that number 14? There's a circle there, but it's.
Yes, that's correct.
And so the depth is roughly 100 feet. It's a little askew, but.
Yeah, you, you can reference those, those numbers on A102.
That's. But the property that is indicated on the drawing, the total length, if I read that correctly, is about 170 feet.
Correct.
So how can these be the same property? There's something doesn't add up. Property number.
Nice.
So I, please go ahead. Question for staff. So it comes back because it's a mystery for me.
I believe what happened here is that they measured the setback from the curb line. The curb line on, on Hillside is not the property line. The property line, so the right of way is 40 feet wide. And if he'll, if the paved portion was set down relatively in the center and you measure from the center of the road, it takes you just about to the wood fence that's up a few steps. Right? And then the shed is 12 feet back from that.
Yeah. So let's take one step at a time because this is getting concerning. You're saying the property is 40 feet wide. The drawing lists us as 45. The APN shows it as 100.
Saying that the public right of way easement, the width of the right of way easement. So Hillside Drive, the, the area that's set forth for the road is 40 feet wide. And the road is set down in the middle of it, but it's not paved to the full 40 feet. So what we do is we measure the width of the road, we go to the center of it and we measure 20 feet, half the right of way width to the property. And that put us pretty much right at the fence.
Okay.
And then from there, the shed's going to be 12 feet behind that. It's pretty common. You know, people think the property line goes to the curb or to the back of the sidewalk.
Okay.
But in Fairfax, it doesn't always do that.
Yeah, no, I'm aware. I'm aware. It's just the drawing.
Yeah, it, it's confusing.
It's mentioned to be the property line. So, right.
Yeah, just misinterpretation. So. Why is it relatively accurate except for that?
And so that then brings us back, sorry for having this, but we're just trying to clarify it here. So that brings us back. Then you have wealth in the front. And you have in the back, whatever it is and used to be unchanged, the 16. Yeah. 16 and 12 is 28. So that's the mass. Okay.
The other thing to remember is there's quite an elevation change between the road bed and where the shed's going to go. So it really, you know, when you're driving along, I don't know that you'll really, you know, it won't, you won't really see it that much and it won't block anyone's visibility.
Right. It's high up. Yeah.
You know, but your pedestrians or anything like that. So it's.
Okay. Thank you.
Fantastic. We learned something. And happy to amend that as a condition of approval anytime.
There might be one more question.
Not all right of ways are 40 feet. So if you do another project, you have to call me and I'll tell you what the roadway easement. Because sometimes it's 30.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Not a, not a question from.
Are there, I saw anybody in the public who wants to comment or online?
There was a hand earlier online, so I'll just take a moment to tell our online audience that if you do have something to say now is your time, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised, Chair Jensen. Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Pfeffer?
Yeah, just to close public, I don't know that this is necessarily a comment for the applicant, but one, I know Hillside Drive very well. Go, I've been down to turn a car. So appreciate how difficult it is to get anything done on those sites. My law is like very similar property, less than 1,200 square feet on a, on a big hill, difficult to do anything. So like the project, just one point of clarification, to me, I don't know that it, it really affects my opinion, but for, I was just curious when looking at the accessory parcel map when the applicant, the, the architect brought it up before. I want to make sure I'm not missing some things. I, my impression, knowing the twist in terms of that wrote a lot is that the subject property is not what is circled and I, I didn't notice that before. It's, it should be O5 up, up there, right? Not 14. I don't know if that, I just wanted to flag that Commissioner Jensen, just to, since, since that's something you were looking at.
Oh, five?
No, you're correct. The lower one, yeah, the accessories page has the wrong site circled.
Okay. It makes sense.
But I believe it's, it's correctly shaded right above that in the, in the one right above it.
Yeah, exactly.
So they can, yeah.
Yeah, that would, I, you know, I was not focused on that map before everything else looked right to me.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Nope, I don't hear any. I did have one question, but now it eludes me what that was. Oh, that is, comes back to staff. We just learned that this shed will replace the existing one. Is that included in the reso somewhere?
No, I think you should add that.
Yeah.
And but I, but I, I would like the wording to say that the existing shed will be removed once the, once the new shed is final. So they do have somewhere to store things while they're building the new one.
Of course.
And then we'll make sure that the other one gets taken out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I'm, that's agreeable. I'm agreeable to that.
Okay. Anyone who wants to make a motion?
So along those lines, where would you suggest, because I agree with that and I was going to ask if we were approving this to add that to the reso.
I think you can just add it as 12, the last condition. That the existing, I think, do you know, do you know, is it, it's like about 40 square feet, isn't it? It's about like six. Yeah, it's really small. It's like. Yeah. So you could just say removal of the approximately, the existing approximately 40 square foot shed once the final inspection has been done on the new one.
Okay, I'll make a motion. So I make a motion to approve resolution 2024 dash O6, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application 24 dash O3 for a conditional use permit and combined front rear setback variance for construction of 120 square foot accessory storage slash music room at 88 Hillside Drive with the addition of condition 12 as on page four. As staff stated, the removal of the existing shed once the new shed is completed to be able to have the applicants move what they have in the old shed to the new shed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Swift?
Yes.
Bayla?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Jensen?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Motion passes. There's a 10 day, 10 day appeal period. This can be started by a verified application to the town clerk in the manner described by the town council. And we will move to item number three. Thank you. And we get a staff report, item number three.
Okay. So this project encompasses the exterior remodel and repainting with a new color, color palette of the existing commercial building at 51 Bellinas Road. The dilapidated horizontal wood siding will be replaced, the front door, the two glazed wood windows will be replaced. So the shingled, it'll be shingled siding, hardy, hardy, hardy shingle siding, a new front Dutch door and one picture window will replace the two existing old dilapidated wooden windows. The town code requires that all changes in the exterior color palette or changes of exterior building materials or changes of window shapes or other new construction on existing commercial buildings require a design review permit from the planning commission. The purpose of the design review process is to foster a good design character through consideration of aesthetic and functional relationships to surrounding development to further enhance the town's appearance. When considering a design review permit application, the planning commission applies criteria contained in the town code. And those criteria include, but are not limited to the following. The proposed development shall create a well composed design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area and to the total setting as seen from the hills and other key vantage points in the community. The proposed development shall be of a quality and character appropriate to and serving to protect the value of private and public investments in the immediate area. There shall exist sufficient variety in the design of the structures and grounds to avoid monotony and exterior, external appearance. The extent to which the structure conforms to the general character of other structures in the vicinity insofar as the character can be ascertained and is found to be architecturally desirable. So the horizontal wood exterior siding will be replaced with hardy shingled siding, which will add articulation to the building facade. Replacing the two mullioned wood framed windows with one large mullioned Anderson colonial style white clad picture window will not significantly alter the building facade and will last longer and be much easier to maintain than the dilapidated wooden windows currently installed there. The proposed window will maintain the basic design of the building. The project also includes placement of a heating, ventilation and air conditioner, air conditioning system on the roof. And the system will be screened from the street view of the building by the false facade parapet that currently extends above the roof line. So the HVAC system will have a minimal impact on the building design. Now, the applicant originally proposed kind of a monochromatic color palette for the front of the building using like various shades of white and off white. And everyone has a different opinion, different opinions about color. It's kind of, you know, a personal thing. I just am used to the downtown buildings having, you know, a varied buildings, each building has its own varied color palette, palette, right? And so I asked the applicant to consider an alternative, which he did. I was very grateful. And so you have both in front of you. One is kind of a white scheme and the other is, is a green one that I, I think meets the design criteria better than the, than the proposed white color palette. So anyway, I'm recommending that you approve application 2404 by adopting attached resolution 2024 dash zero seven. And that resolution does cite approval of the Benjamin Moore, Carolina Gull and Anderson clad white and Hardy mud flats color scheme for the building. Yes. Although I really like the way it's painted now, I will say. Why are you changing it? No, I'm kidding.
Thank you, Lena. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. I, I do have one. Looking at the drawings, the I have two questions. The first one, there are statements about the historic value of that building. Why is that there? If whether or not it would be a historical resource, the applicant, you know, why are those drawings here included?
Where are you seeing that?
That would be drawing A2 at the lower right bottom.
Okay. The state of California says anything over 50 years old is a historic building. You know, it, it could qualify as a historic building, but we do our own review of whether something is noted in like the history books as a, there are certain things that kick you into actually being a historic building. It can be designed. It can be like, you know, a noted person lived or operated there, you know? And this, this building didn't really meet any of the criteria. So it's been changed on the exterior over time and so I don't know, Morgan, the, the architect could probably address that.
Okay, we'll, we'll hear him.
He's the property owner.
All right.
I'm not sure why he wrote that.
Good. No more questions. Let's go to the applicant. Please come forward.
Oh, I, I see. I know what he's saying. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm the perpetrator here. I'm also hard of hearing and I lost my hearing aids. So you got to, you get your chance to yell at me if you want. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I didn't catch that last one. Unfortunately.
Wanted you to explain why you had this section right down here. I think you were just worried that someone was going to. I think you were just worried that someone was going to try to say that it was historic. Like you make any changes to it, right? You cite that. I looked it up, that that government code section that says that if you object to it.
Yeah, the historical evaluation is something that um was technically adopted by the past, the last uh director of planning for Fairfax and it's um but you they could ask to have a historical evaluation down on a building to see if it took place in anything, any historical event or anybody who famous lived there or anything like that. The what what the, if you read the fine print of it, if if this were to be decided by a state committee that this is an historical building. Because it's privately owned by me, I can opt not to have it designated as a historical building. If a republic building, it'd be a different matter. So that's basically the caveat that I put in there just for that reason.
It's just information. Right. Thank you. Do you have a preference for, there's so there's two color schemes currently that you have developed.
Preference for what? I'm sorry.
Do you have a preference? You have provided uh two different color schemes.
Letter color or the mud flats?
Right.
Actually, I've come around to the mud flat idea, if that's all right with you guys. So good, you know, this building is only 12 feet wide and 12 feet high.
Right.
So it's not going to dominate much anything anywhere. But I think a little color wouldn't hurt and the mud flat color is sort of a a blue green with a wash of mud on it. So it's a blue, blue green color to be, I think it'd be fine.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
No more questions?
Mr. Hall?
Yes, Commissioner Newton.
Are these your renderings on the attachments? Are these yours, the drawings?
Yes.
I just want to say how beautiful they are. I love them. I love the mud flat color and thank you. Because it made my day. I like seeing the uh.
My pleasure. Are you, are you in Blue Lake?
Blue Hill.
In Maine? You're in Blue Lake, Maine right now?
Blue Hill.
This is a special place.
But it's hill.
Yeah, I see. Anyways, that's has a special place in my heart. Anyway. Well, thank you for the kind, the um kind comment.
We have one more? Yeah, go ahead.
You also also wanted to echo that comment that I love this drawing. I love the rendering. I love your architectural drawings. You don't see hand drawings much anymore. The skill that's required to make those drawings, really appreciate uh the skill that goes into the drawings and it's a wonderful building. It contributes a lot to the character of our downtown, so you know, I hope it continues. Uh, you hope it continue to thrive in that space.
Well, thank you. I I've with that bunch of buildings there, I've tried to keep the F for funk in Fairfax a little bit.
Thank you. I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? Out here, I see one.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. I'm a neighbor. I just wanted to express uh support for his upgrade uh of the front. It's uh old and he's using uh much more fire safe materials, which I think should be encouraged. In fact, I I would uh ask you if uh there's any town incentives other than defensible space incentives and if that could be considered or developed in the future for people to do upgrades with a little bit of extra helping hand from the town. So he's, as I understand it, doing both fire safe improvements using the Hardy material and it also works to improve the flood uh protection for that building. So uh uh he's uh fixing up the neighborhood slowly. And I know he's scrimped to save and I would encourage you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have nobody else in the room? Do we have anybody online?
I see no hands online, Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion? Or comments? Go ahead.
Okay, motion to approve Resolution number 202407, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving design review permit number 2404 for the exterior remodeling and new color palette for the building at 51 Bellinas Road.
I'll second.
Okay, I just want to clarify that the resolution that we're addressing in the resolution, the second color palette. Just wanted to be sure we're.
Yes, it says that the planning commission uh applied the design review criteria and while reviewing the proposed permit application and determined that the proposed color palette using two different shades of green for the building trim and siding, white for the window framing and gray for the front door as depicted in the color elevation received by the town on April 1st, 2024. Blah, 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 blah. That's on page one.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, Swift? Bayla?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen? Oh, Newton?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, there's a 10 day appeal period. Um, can be started by a verified, verified application to the town clerk in the manner prescribed by the town council. Thank you. So we will move on. There are no discussion items, so we'll go to minutes. We have two sets of minutes, January 11th and February 15. Do we have any comments on the January 11th meeting minutes?
Okay, I do. Um. And just for clarification with staff, that was a special meeting. So we didn't have
open time.
Public comments on non-agenda items or open time for public expression.
Yep.
So we could delete those two. And then on page two. I'm sorry, page five. The second to the last paragraph at the bottom where it said Commissioner Swift thanked the building and planning departments for their great work. They are the bomb. So the sentiment was definitely mine, but I've never used the bomb in my lifetime.
We heard, we heard it.
Outside of tonight. So I'd like to strike that editorial comment by the minutes writer.
Yes, I think you maybe should have a maybe a private conversation.
The tape.
We could do that.
Something like.
I I checked the tape.
I can. Replay.
Those were my only corrections on that one.
I didn't read.
Anybody else on the January 11th meeting minutes? Hearing none. Then we'll move to the one, next one is February 15, if I'm memory correct, yes, 15. Any comments on the February 15 meeting minutes? There bomb hiding in there somewhere?
No.
I looked. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, just that I I was here in February. And not, sorry, on the on the front page, not attending remotely. I don't, we wouldn't pet four people in in person.
Any other seeing? Oh, one more, Commissioner Swift.
So on page three. Hold on. On the bottom, um, motion to approve the minutes of December 14th. I believe the second was from Commissioner Pfeffer and not Commissioner Kelly on those. And that's what I had my notes and I went back and checked the
Do you?
The video.
Do Commissioners Kelly and Pfeffer agree?
I believe you.
Cool.
I just, I just checked to remember that I was there in person, so I I trust Chair Swift on that one.
Form, Chair Swift.
Yeah.
And then um on page four. And kind of we've had a discussion on minutes before, but under Commissioner comments and requests, um, the first line is Commissioner Swift asked staff to come up with a better way to convey code changes. That's really doesn't explain um kind of the discussion that we had on those. And so what I was during that comment, I was trying to convey that when we went through all of the meetings with all of the code changes that came before us, we didn't have the complete code, right? So we had.
Get out of context. They would just have the.
Right, they had some of the additions, some of the strikeouts, but not all of those. And anything that was left unchanged, they did not add that. So we had a discussion about, um, I had a discussion about how difficult that was for both the planning commission, the town council and the public to understand what the changes were and in the context of the whole code. So what I wanted, um, as we moved forward was to see drafts come back as a whole draft code. So we see what's been deleted, we see what's been added and we see what remains the same. So I would like that reflected there versus this, which really doesn't convey the concern.
Right.
And then, um oops, sorry. And then on the adjournment, it said a motion was made, seconded and unanimously approved to adjourn. But it, since we do the motion in the second on doing that, we should probably have in there that it was motion second Swift and Pfeffer. Those are my changes.
So do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes with corrections noted?
I'll make a motion um to approve the two sets of minutes with the changes mentioned.
You want to add comments? Do we have? We did not open public comments. Um, do we do that on meeting minutes?
We don't have to make the change. That's weird.
We've never heard that before, but we could if we want to. It sounds like somebody wants to talk. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Uh, 2:15 meeting minutes, I spoke on that evening contending that there was a uh decrease in ADU production that's mentioned in the meeting minutes. I wanted to uh note this evening, not that the meeting minutes need to be changed at all, but just for uh your knowledge that it has been confirmed by the town that the ADU production since 2021 has been going down on a downward slope. And from 2022 to 2023, it dropped 56% from nine to four. I would like you to consider why that's happening and note that Renee Goddard before she stepped down.
Yeah, but you're you're out of context here. This has nothing to do with the meeting minutes, but that could be in your public comments in our next meeting. Uh, I want you to bring it to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So back to the meeting minutes. Can we approve both in one single motion?
Sure.
I think Commissioner Swift, you were starting that. Or did I just?
I think she moved. I'll second it.
I think I I made the motion and.
And Newton just seconded.
And Mimi just seconded.
Okay.
I'll call the roll. Swift?
Yes.
Bayla?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
What?
Oh, Newton, God, sorry.
You should just start with me.
I have a mental block about it. I could actually see you in the window over there too, so.
Aye.
Me, Newton, sorry. Okay.
Aye.
Chair Jansen? Did you say aye? Did you say aye and I missed?
Did I? I said aye, yes.
I was laughing, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then we are going to switch the planning directors' reports and the commissioner comments and requests. So the planning um directors' report comes first.
Okay, I can mention a few things. First of all, I'm really disappointed that Cindy doesn't consider us the bomb. Yeah, that will be in the minutes. Um, also, the and and the housing element has indeed been certified. So yeah, thank you for mentioning that. And we are currently kind of working on for the town council, but we can also bring it to the planning commission, just a a staff report on on things that are in the housing amount that we've implemented so far, just to kind of keep a running tab on items that we've implemented. And we do have our new um housing planner who is also maybe news to the planning commission. We've hired a a housing planner or an associate planner who is um tasked with implementing housing related items. Um, and her name is Brenne McKillop. And so we hope to bring her to the planning commission at some point in the future to have you all meet her. So anyway, we have her doing work and she's already um hit the ground running and we've made some good updates to our our website to kind of reorganize some of our housing related items. And so we're kind of working on website upgrades um to basically have that work a little bit better. Right now, it's kind of dominated by housing element, but now that the housing element's adopted, we're kind of moving into implementation and having housing be kind of a more regular thing on the website versus just the housing element itself. And we have two items coming up for the next meeting. We're going to be talking about um light pollution and dark sky option was with the planning commission. And we have an, we have an intern who is getting a degree with San Francisco in planning and he is working for free for uh the town uh in order to get some course credit. And he is helping me do some of the research on dark sky. So his name is Alexander and I'll be bringing him to the next meeting to help present the dark sky results that we've come up with. And also that the next meeting, we uh we are required to uh make general plan findings that our capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan before the uh town council can adopt their budget. So I'll be bringing that to the planning commission um at the next meeting as well. That's all I got.
That's great news. Good. Thank you.
Question on that, before we get to the commissioner stuff, is that on the current CIP or next fiscal years?
Uh, next fiscal year is CIP. Yes.
Yeah, please. Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. So glad to hear that there's a housing planner. Is that a permanent, is that a staff position or is that a, a, like a contract? It is a staff position and it was, it's, it was adopted in last year's budget, but we've only gotten around to hiring that position now. So it's, it's a permanent staff position. Well, that's great. And that person's role is implementing the housing element or actually? Yeah, implementing housing element and they are anticipated to help. Like if, if development projects come in that are kind of bigger projects that are related to housing element implementation, then they would help out with that as well. Cool. Was there state support for that position or this is just a general fund thing that's coming out of? It's a general fund position. Yeah. That the town council approved last budget. Good. Glad to hear it. Glad to hear you're getting some help. Yep. Yeah. Hope. There's a, you know, a couple of towns, a couple of cities in the state that have had their housing elements decertified. I'm sure you've seen in the news recently. So hopefully having a housing planner on board will help us avoid that kind of. Yeah. Anyway, congratulations. Awesome work. You have to try really hard to get your housing element decertified, but yes.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. That means we're going to commissioner comments and requests. Commissioner Swift has a few.
You mentioned what we're going to be looking at next meeting, which is great. Can you start giving us like more months out? So we have a sense of what we're going to be looking at. We've got safety element yet and, and some other items. So it'd be great if when you have your.
No, that's, that's great. That's, that's such a great reminder. We do have updates, as you mentioned, on the land use, safety and town center element that are impacted by the housing element, just to bring those other elements consistent with the housing element. And those will become, we haven't scheduled those yet, but those will be coming up within the next few months, probably.
And I assume that we will have more time to consider those than what we've gone through the last year since, you know, we're not against a wall with those. So we'll be able to have more community input and that type of thing. And then we also have the code changes. So we can figure out how we're gonna fit some of those or chop them up or how the plan for how we're gonna do that.
Yeah, they're mostly, these would mostly be general plan amendments. There's not code changes that go along with those. Now, the, the dark sky does, does have code changes.
Well, yeah. And I meant for the code, our current code corrections or errors that we, you know, we talked about addressing those as we can fit some of those in and start that process of cleanup.
Cleanup.
Or corrections. Tree permits. So I believe that still comes under the planning department issuing tree permits and, and all, correct?
So tree permits are kind of complicated. So since Susan, Susan at the front counter is the staff person to the tree committee. There are some tree permits that are, that are not processed. The planning department has nothing to do with it. If the tree, if the tree removal doesn't have anything to do with a project, it's handled by Susan and the tree committee. If it, if it's, if the tree's coming out because for a project, then it comes to you, it goes to the tree committee for a recommendation to you. But if it's just a tree on its own, they, they have the ability to act on the request for removal or like significant trimming.
Okay. So, you know, kind of a general comment and, and maybe it's not specific to you all, but just a thought on that since we're in bird nesting season right now. And there's a lot of tree trimming being done. Perhaps without permits. In, in some cases, I think, you know, going forward, it'd be great to have information on the town's website in general about our tree program. So people understand and know when a permit is, is needed or not needed in Fairfax. And then the other thing with that, if people come to get a tree permit during this time, there's a great flyer on Fire Safe Marin's website about bird nesting, what to look for, that type of thing that can help homeowners and others coming before to understand that we're in a bird nesting season. And I'm talking in general, burden, you know, birds, it doesn't have to be spotted owls or anything, but it is bird nesting season. So something like this, the town could look at maybe as a handout or some kind of information. League of California cities, we talked about this last year, the planning commissioner academy this year was in Southern California. Next year it's going to be in Santa Rosa. March 5th through 7th. So hopefully we can get folks to go to that. It's also now that they've gone through the one that they just had last month, all of the presentations are up on their website from this time. So, you know, there's a lot of it. That's kind of the stuff they do all the time for new commissioners. But they also do a presentation on new legislation, which is always good. And they have a, a presentation on that. The other thing I noticed when I looked up there was they had a presentation on managing public meetings in a contentious era. I don't know why they thought of that to do this time, but it's of interest. You might want to all go and look at that and see that presentation. And then do we ever get the Sonoma State?
No, I, I will, I will ask again.
Thank you.
I will ask again. Yeah.
And that's my comments.
Okay. Can I, can I add just one little thing on that? So I mean, if it is indeed in Santa Rosa, that'd be super easy to get to. And if, I mean, I, I think I can promise this on behalf of the town manager that we would likely be able to cover the, the registration costs if, if you wanted to attend that next year. So and I can confirm, but.
Thank you. Other comments?
So just on housing element implementation. So with the approval of a housing element, that means we've completed all the zoning amendments, right? So just a question on when those zoning amendments, or, or maybe they already have appear in the Muni code available online is, is, is that, is there, has that been completed already?
It's already been, it's supposed to be already updated. The clerk did it and advised us of that maybe a week and a half ago, I think.
I'm not sure if the workforce housing overlay updates are actually integrated yet, are they? Did you check?
I thought I read them online.
Oh, okay. I, that's.
I could be cracking up though.
I, I do know that the ones in November are on there and the ones for related to cluster zoning are on there. I just didn't know if the workforce housing ones were on there or not. But I can, I can check.
Okay.
We, we can check.
And yeah. And then something I've asked about in the past is, you know, I mean, I, I have a background in design and I find our objective standards hard to follow because they're not very graphically rich. I'm more of a visual person. I, I noticed that in, this was before my time on the PC that we had these OD, you know, the ODS very graphically rich ODS prepared by Opticos. And then I don't know the history, you don't have to go into it. I know they were, that team was disappeared. And then we lost all that work. So I'm just curious if there's ever any consideration of trying to clarify our ODS through some more descriptive graphics comparable to what was prepared for us back in 20, 2021.
Yeah. I mean, that we could certainly, that could certainly be something we could do. So it's just a, a time commitment thing, but we could, we could take that on. So I think what happened was Opticos did prepare, we, there was a regional project where Opticos prepared objective design, and this was before my time. So I will take credit nor blame for any of this. They created the, the graphical ODS that you said for the region and all the jurisdiction were participating in that effort. And then for whatever reason, a diet and Batsy decided to simplify ours so that it could be easily put into our zoning ordinance, which means that we have objective design and development standards. It's fully integrated into our code and is right now available. A lot of the other jurisdictions have been struggling with implementation and haven't been able to kind of figure out how to work with the objective design and development standards. So in that respect, we're ahead of the other jurisdictions. But you are correct. We do not have the, the visual examples that make it easier to implement and easier to visualize.
The codes update, the laws updated. That's, that's good news. Okay. Thank you.
But, but you're right. We could, and we were thinking about potentially developing like, you know, not changing the code, but using the objective design and domain standards graphics that we have. And maybe there's some way that we could use the graphical work that's been done to explain the text. And yeah, or, or supplement that. So, yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
But I guess the question with that is, because I know we had commissioners that worked diligently on that Opticos project. And I don't know that what our code ended up marries up with those changes or those items in that Opticos code book that commissioners worked on to make them applicable to Fairfax. I don't know that they all match out, but.
You know, I, I, I think they probably overlap, but don't match exactly. So.
I can provide some information because I was around the, I understand that, you know, graphics are always easier than words. The problem with the ODS is that it starts to describe styles. And so it becomes like a, a book of samples that you can only use and thou shall not do something else. And that is very restrictive in, in a design area. And if you try to solve that, it becomes horrifically complicated. So in a way, less is more. The beauty of words is that you don't get locked down in that. Whereas if you start to develop that outlet, you are bogging. So there's, there's, that's one of the histories. And I know that was the part we struggled with. At that point in time, it was urgent to do it. So a lot of things we skipped over. But it spirals in these very complicated graphics, basically. So that's what I remember from that period.
Yeah, definitely don't want to make the process any harder. Just was, you know, looking at some of those examples where it's less about our architectural style than the sort of massing, you know, height setback kind of guidelines, which are for me easier to understand as a graphic than a, than a just, than a descriptive text. But yeah, true. I understand the value of that is simple, less is more. I agree.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Very similar to Commissioner Swift on the just look ahead agenda. I very much appreciated what we had during the fall. Something just as informal as that as, you know, pri, yeah, priority one here, we're going to introduce, and then we're going to update just to see what's on the horizon, you know, quarter, happy year out. And on a similar vein, I was wondering if, because I know for the housing element compliance now there's annual reports that you have to provide to HCD on ongoing compliance. And does it make sense to build in or schedule a sort of calendar advance check-in? Because similar to the concern with us putting amendments through on a very short turnaround time to be in compliance, if there's a change that we're going to have to make because this year is not, we're not getting the progress or we're not seeing results that we're expected to see in, you know, say it's year two. And we know HCD is now saying, oh, if you didn't get 10% or something like that, you have to make the exchange. You know, having, having a built in sort of calendar look ahead so that we can start working on that change in July or August and not October. Just something like to get, you know, to just, to, just to build in a process for that, since I know the, the ongoing regular compliance is probably going to be just like this new housing element process more than what planning departments had been accustomed to.
Yeah, the requirement is April 1st of each year. There's a, we're required to submit the report to the HCD. So we could, we could program in a visit to the planning commission and then a visit to the town council. Just like a few months prior to that, just to make sure. But, but we can't really report until April 1st because we need all the data.
Right. Yeah. Calendar year, reporting year, totally fine. Just, um, just, just so that there is some way to check, to give us a little bit more forewarning if we're going to have to make changes in advance of a report.
Thank you. Any other comments? Krishna Newton? Then I will make, oh, go ahead.
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Uh, I will make one last. This is a request for staff. I think we heard from the the people at Spruce wrote, they're concerned about the status of this project. So could we in our next meeting have a short response of what the status of the project apparent to be?
You know.
Or now, that's possible too.
We should agendize it. We should agendize it since it's controversial.
I know, but the problem, the problem is I don't know what we're going to agendize because there's no law that says they have to do it.
Well, we could say that on the, you know.
Yeah, it's informative. So people understand their concerns. So they understand where it is. Projects can take a long time. Just so that there is a communication going forward.
We can do just a brief verbal report at the next meeting that is kind of when we have all that, we can give you all the facts and where we are in the process and what outreach has been done and all that type of thing. So.
Yeah, a verbal response is what I'm looking for.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we are going to move to our last item, the adjournments. I need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:50? 8:51?
A second.
Okay, Swift?
Yes.
Hi. Hi.
Newton? I'm gonna say.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
Cool.
Meeting adjourned.